Welcome to the Olentangie Local School Board meeting. Tonight is Thursday, September 6th, and we're in the Berlin Room at the Olentangie Administrative Offices. Mrs. Hatfield, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barts?
Here.
Mrs. Feesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now take an entertaining motion to approve tonight's agenda. So move.
Take it.
Mrs. Hatfield, call the roll, please. Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
This evening, we have three presentations, so let's kick things off by welcoming Bethany Lanko and Alicia Behrens. They will be providing an update on Food Service and Wellness Committee.
I know. I have to now. I've started a trend with bringing little treats for you guys. So, Alicia and I here tonight, just to give you guys kind of a brief update, we're going to kind of tag-team our presentation. I'm going to give you a kind of a brief update of the Food Service Department, and then we'll kind of tag-team talking about the Wellness Committee, District Wellness Committee that we've formed, and then Alicia will kind of give you an update on what's going on in her role as Student Supervisor of Student Wellbeing. So, the Food Service Department, we have lots of fun things happening last year and into this school year. Just to give you some numbers, last year, we served 1,644,224 lunches, 197,200 breakfasts, and then 1,084,456 à la carte meal equivalents, as we call them. And that is what we served in the 172 days that we were in service. Due to four snow days, it was a little bit lower than we would like to see. So that gave us a total of 2,925,880 meals. That equates to about 17,000 meals per school day. So, a lot of meals we served. It seems like a lot. We did see some decreases in participation at the middle school and elementary levels, but we did see an increase at high school level, which was very encouraging to see. And we also saw a decrease in our product costs for the year. They were down about $1.13 a year prior. They were at $1.15. So, encouraging things. To kind of look at participation for this coming school year, if you've looked at our elementary menu, we've actually added two hot entrees to our menu for the kids to choose from. One is kind of your traditional chicken nuggets, hamburgers, hot dogs, corn dogs. The other one is a vegetarian-friendly option for our kids. We did a parent survey last winter, and that was a lot of the feedback we got from parents, was that they wanted to see more vegetarian options. So we are giving that a try. Seems to be very well received by our students so far. It's a little bit challenging with, you know, kitchen production, but we're figuring that out. Also doing the same at middle school, too, offering them a vegetarian option to hope get more kids coming through our lunch lines. Brought you a couple of new items that we're going to be trying in our schools. The first is a smoothie program that we're going to be doing in middle schools and high schools. It's called Whirls with a Z. And we thought it would have started by now, but we had some issues with equipment getting backlog, so hopefully in these next couple of weeks, we'll see it at the middle schools and high schools. But I have two flavors. We're going to be doing strawberry banana and then mango pineapple. They'll be available at breakfast time as an entree item, and then at lunchtime as an à la carte item. They meet smart snacks in schools, which are those federal standards governing all of the food and beverages that we sell to students outside the reimbursable meal. And then I also have some confetti cake-filled cookies by Rich's. They are whole grain. They meet smart snacks, too. And then some white cheddar Cheetos puffs that are also smart snack compliant. So that's kind of what's going on as an overall in the Food Service Department. I'm going to turn it over to Alicia, who's going to talk about the District Wellness Committee.
And I'll pass out snacks. Hello again. So, last year, Bethany and I reconvened the District Wellness Committee. It's about 13 members of different stakeholders. We have staff, administrators, teachers, nurse, and then community members. We do have some parents who have volunteered to be a part of it, as well as people from the Health District. And someone from Wendy's, Wendy's Corporate are part of the team. Who's also a parent. Part of the Wellness Team to review our wellness policy that we have to review every three years to make sure that we're following the OSDA nutrition guidelines, what are we doing for the health and wellness of our students in regards to their nutrition, physical activity, and things like that. So last year, we met quarterly to discuss the current policy and kind of where we want to go from here, especially with committee. If we have this committee in place, it's a great time to use that to move forward in our wellness initiatives. So one of the goals that we have for this year is to roll out a district-wide survey to buildings to find out what other buildings are using in their classrooms and in their buildings as far as policies regarding food and physical activity. Are we having buildings who are using food-based reward systems? Are they using food as a birthday treat and holiday treats? Just so we can have a better idea of what everyone is doing in the different buildings. Because when I did a brief kind of survey, especially across the elementary levels, it was kind of varied from building to building, so it'd be good to have a better idea of kind of what that looked like. Also looking at physical activity, are we using taking away recess or taking away gym as a punishment for kids if they're not getting their homework done or if they're acting out? Are we using that as a disciplinary action? And if so, is that the best tactic that we should be doing? Because obviously, we want our kids to be active and make sure that they are staying well. So that is part of our initiative for this year, is get that survey out and figure out kind of what we're doing across the district, and then go from there based on what that data shows us. To give you a brief update on kind of what I'm doing this year, we added Katie Hostic to our Student Wellbeing Initiative, and she has been collecting a lot of data from the buildings. She's been going out to every building and doing a non-academic barrier profile, what the building feels like their non-academic barriers are for that building, what supports they feel like they have in place, and what supports they think that they need. And from that, we're then going to develop a district profile to look across the district, what are the trends that we're seeing? What are the things that we can be putting in place district-wide to address certain issues? I will tell you, anxiety has been about every building that we've gone to. Everyone says anxiety. So how can we look at that anxiety piece? And what can we be doing in our prevention and our curriculum in order to promote resiliency and anxiety reduction within our students? So that's kind of our big initiative, that we're going to look at that curriculum and prevention piece this year. And obviously, we've increased our mental health supports in the buildings as well. So I think we're making great progress, and we're continuing to look at how we can do that in a fiscally responsible way and support our students in every way possible. Thank you.
Any questions? Sorry.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First, does anybody else before?
Oh, you do. You go first.
Okay. First of all, like the anxiety component, I know that seems to be like first and front and center on everything. And I think in attending one of the PPTs last year or something, you know, they talked about the correlation between anxiety and social media, and social media seems to be contributing to all of the above, depression, anxiety. I just wondered if any schools in the district would be encouraging or rewarding students that don't have social media? Like, you know what I'm saying? Because it's so, they're all using it, and we know that that's a contributing factor in maybe when the buildings have their curriculum nights or those first conversations with parents, that they could be emphasizing that that's one of the contributing factors.
Right. I know in a lot of the buildings, especially in middle school, they're looking at teaching the students how to use social media effectively and safely, and then talking about how you're using social media, and that's your digital footprint that you're leaving for the rest of your life, basically. And similarly, looking at how what you're putting on social media is, in a way, branding yourself, that what you're putting out there is then what people are seeing and what is representing you. So I know they're looking at it kind of in that standpoint. And then we're also doing for PPT for our second session, we're having Dr. Tim Conrad do the cyberbullying presentation to parents on how to help parents understand how to prevent cyberbullying, how to protect students from that as best we can. But, so social media is definitely an area that was probably one of the second or third most prevalent non-academic barriers that most buildings have addressed.
And when was that presentation? Is that like your November one?
That's the November one. Yes, November 7.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Julie?
I have a question as it relates to the high school cafeterias. Are their menus different? Are their offerings different? And I'm saying this because my husband is at OHS, and he loves the food this year. But then I got an email from a parent at Orange saying that her son is disappointed because some of his favorites have disappeared from the menu. And I said, "Well, that's surprising to me, because my husband is loving the food at Olentangie this year."
So our menus for high school are the same. There is some flexibility when it comes to what the manager selects to serve for a certain item, because we write them very generically. Because we get a lot of times when we meet with managers, "My kids don't like this. My kids love this." My kids, and so it's very mixed. We sometimes will write the menu very generically to allow some flexibility for the manager to serve what they feel is best for their kids. We did have a management change at Orange High School, so the manager who's been there for many years did retire. So it could be just maybe a change in management, but if there's certain specific that they're looking for, I mean, we'll definitely look to see what it is.
I told her to tell her student to write up a letter, to give it to the manager, to say, "Here are the things that I like." And not to have the parent get involved, but use it as a learning experience for the student.
Yes, because we gladly want to know what they want, because sometimes that's what they do. They'll go home and tell their parent that there's nothing to eat.
Right. That is what was happening.
Yes. There's usually a lot to it, and it may not be one thing that they're looking for.
Right.
Well, I can tell you, when I was at Liberty, I had a student come up to me, was upset about lack of vegetarian options. I said, "Well, let's go back and talk to Mr. Perry." They had a conversation right in the kitchen, and he said, "We'll get you what you want." I mean, honestly, I think they just, they cook it whenever they want individually if they want that.
Right. We always tell the managers, they can put out anything additional. They have to have what's on the menu. But if something, as you know, is not popular in your kitchen, like a fish sandwich, you can put out something additional to help your kids make what they want, get what they want.
I saw they had beautiful cut-up vegetables at Orange. I thought, "Those look delicious."
Mm-hmm. Yes. We have a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables that we give to the kids every day. And you can follow us on Twitter, @OStFood, if you want to see some of that yummy food. So, yes.
I was going to ask about the anxiety issue.
Oh. I know that I have an unrealistic view of what I think should happen with social media, but it does seem to be the backbone of a lot of our issues going on. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much for the update. We love it when you come and bring us food.
And just to clarify, the position that Alicia mentioned is a reclassification of a previously, of a previous position. It wasn't an additional position.
Within her department? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Now, let's welcome Tim Beard. He is going to share with us the assessment schedule for this year. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I don't have snacks, but we're going to take a 45-minute standardized test. That's my testing joke. I don't get very many. Or, yeah, whatever you want. All right. So we're going to give you some updates as far as testing results from last year, where we're going this year, and what we're doing local assessment-wise. So to kind of cap last year's state testing, we have received all results from spring testing. We had over 13,000 students tested, so close to 32,000 tests administered. Those test results were mailed to students' homes second week of August. We had one student who took the summer Grade III Ohio State Test. Happy to report that student did meet that promotion score, which means that we had no students, once again, no Grade III students retained due to the third grade reading guarantee. The final piece to cap 2017-18 is the Ohio, the high school results, which we'll get later in this month. So that kind of is the 2017-18 results in a nutshell. This year, we're, no changes at all from last year as far as what tests were required to give. We're still giving grades three to eight EOL in math, grades five and eight science. The high school end, of course, assessments are the same seven that we've had for a few years. Test times continue to vary between two and a half hours to four hours. Two and a half hours is your Grade III math. Four hours is your high school English Language Arts. And we continue to minimize disruption of instructional time, and by that, I mean, we really make a concerned effort to limit the days, particularly in the high schools and middle schools, where they only have four days of testing in the spring. And we're able to do that by sharing devices between the buildings, so they're able to do, again, majority of their testing in four school days. So that's what we're looking at for 2018-2019 school year for our state tests. I thought this was kind of interesting. So we have now given online state tests in Olentangie for three full school years. So that means we've given over 100,000 tests online, and I am pleased to report, to my knowledge, we have never had a student not able to complete an online test due to our technical issues. There's been a few minor ones statewide, but for the most part, the platform really is a solid platform. We continue to use, the state continues to use AIR as its vendor. So, again, three straight years of online tests in the district. Elementary local assessment-wise, we're continuing to use AmesWeb 1.0 as our universal screener. We use that to identify at-risk students and also as a progress monitoring tool. That's given three times a year. We're actually in our fall window right now. It's a very short assessment. It's three to five minutes to administer. That again is grades K5, that's in reading and math. And the nice thing about AmesWeb is we're able to use that as our reading diagnostic tool or assessment for third grade guarantee purposes, so it kind of double dips. This year, I guess, exciting again from a testing person's perspective, we have a new assessment in the middle school called AmesWeb Plus, which is very similar to AmesWeb One, obviously, different being it encompasses curriculum-based measures and standards-based measures. It is also given three times a year, and another slight difference is it's given online via Chromebooks. It's a little bit longer assessment at 20 to 40 minutes, and we're also in that fall window right now for the AmesWeb Plus assessment. Other district testing updates, Terranova Inview, this is the same as it's been for years, given gift identification, grades two, three, and six. That's end of February, early March this year. PSAT, we're continuing to give that to all juniors, primarily for Soon and Stern National Merit Scholarship recognition, and that's also optional for sophomores. That test is scheduled for October the 10th this year, Wednesday, I believe. ACT, we're entering our third year of the state-funded version. It's not a different version by any means, but the state funded, the state is now funding testing for all AC, for all juniors, and that date is February the 20th. We've given that paper-based the first two years. There is some conversation if we're going to do online or paper this year. That's kind of still to be determined at this time. And then lastly, so we do annually, our department, Data Assessment Department, we do an assessment audit, excuse me, where we are looking to make sure that assessments like AmesWeb 1.0, that we kind of are efficient and obviously compliant with legislation. And by efficient and compliant, I mean, we're able to use things like AmesWeb 1.0 for, again, our universal screener and also third grade guarantee purposes. So again, kind of double dips. We also, in the district, have Performance Matters. It's our third year as well with that. That's our district's data dashboard, which houses everything from AmesWeb data to ACT data to state testing data. All teachers have access to that, and it links to their current students, very kind of a slick program. The other piece to Performance Matters, it's an online assessment platform, which, where our department, we go out and work with teachers to help them create these assessments. And then lastly, we continue to use SchoolGee as our learning management system. In that system, there's also another online assessment platform, and kind of a perk to that is that that does sync to Power School Gradebook for our teachers. So that is my brief, how about efficient assessment update for everyone?
I have a question for you. So on the Performance Matters, you said the district data dashboard, that the teachers have access to test scores?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then are they using that as a way to help students?
Absolutely.
Once that result?
Yes.
Benchmarks? So then, how are you, is there any way that you're tracking then that post-test result as to how their grades are, what their assessment, what the teacher's assessment is between, because some kids are rotten test takers, you know? And we're all, at some point, have that point where tests, and kids have test overload, and maybe they had a bad day, but it's not reflective of really what they're doing in the classroom? Are your teachers able to help and differentiate that?
I mean, it pulls in all data that students from like AmesWeb assessments at the elementary level to state assessments, to, and it does have like early warning indicators for students who have multiple, I can't think off the top of my head, poor grades and even attendance.
I have a question. Is Terranova online now? It's still paper? Okay.
And frankly, it's fiscally to our advantage to continue that.
Just, if I could, some feedback between Power School and SchoolGee. While the gradebook is integrated and synced, the assignments aren't, and that can be tricky, because I go to Power School to see what assignments are due, and you can get a false positive, because the assignments from SchoolGee is not pulled through to Power School. It's a challenge. So if we could sync both, that would be fantastic.
I have a couple of questions. Was the first, the first year that we did the online testing, was that Park?
No. We did, the Park year of 14-15, which I was, I was not here, but we did paper. The first year, we did online, which was 15-16 was all the AIR version, which we don't call in the air test, but most.
So now we have some good historical data?
We do.
Since we're using the same test.
We do. And for me, from my perspective, it's a lot easier, and from the building perspective, they're very comfortable. And honestly, the AIR platform is, it's pretty solid. It's pretty easy to administer that assessment. The Park platform was not my favorite.
The PSAT, is that mandatory?
It's not.
It's not? And is there a cost for sophomores or juniors or both?
Junior's, there's no cost. Sophomores, it is $16 per. And we typically have 80 to 150 per building sophomores.
And then, well, I mean, I made my sophomore take it, and then realized, oh, I wouldn't have to pay it the next year.
Right. And again, no charge for ACT as well.
Right. And my last question for you is the AmesWeb. So I know we've always used it in our intervention side of the house, and then we started using it as a universal screener. And then I heard it was, Mr. Fettie told me, it was going to change as we knew it, and is that what you referenced is, there was another AmesWeb term?
Right, right. There's, right now, we're, K5 is doing AmesWeb 1.0, which is what we've done for years, and six to eight is doing AmesWeb Plus. So this will be the last year that actually 1.0 is in existence as a product, frankly. And it's also the last year it'll be approved for third grade guarantee purposes. So our hope being, well, excuse me, AmesWeb Plus came out kind of late in the game that they're approved for third grade guarantee, so.
So we'll have to switch?
Correct.
Over, and is there a higher cost to the Plus compared to 1.0?
This year, there is, it's the exact same amount for Plus to 1.0.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And...
There is a lot of testing.
There is a lot of testing. And not MVS, those kids.
They do a great job coordinating it all.
It is. I'm most impressed with the logistics of how the computers travel around the district.
That one's got to be really tricky. Finally, our last presentation is Ms. Jackie Merkel, and she will report diversity recommendations. Welcome.
You guys all have an outline of your presentation.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me here today to do the yearly update for equity and inclusion. So I wanted to start by sharing a quick anecdote. I once had a teacher tell me that every single staff member in the district can recite the mission like that, to facilitate maximum learning for every student. And this made me really proud to know that we all are working towards a clear and collective purpose. And so when I think about what the mission means to me, I can't help but to reflect on our strategic plan, and specifically, the objective of promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. So in order to ensure maximum learning for all of our students, each and every one of those 21,071 students, it requires a commitment to the following beliefs, values, and actions. To promote a culture of inclusive excellence, we strive to ensure structures, processes, and opportunities meet the needs of all students. We recognize that our success is integrally linked to how well we value, engage, and affirm the rich diversity of our students, staff, family, administrators, and community members. We focus on ensuring access to educational opportunity, cultivating student success, and fostering high-quality learning. And lastly, that we believe in active, intentional, and ongoing engagement with diversity and inclusion, not the delivery of isolated initiatives. And so as you very well know, our district has continued to diversify across all identity markers over the last 15 to 20 years. And I have selected a few statistics to highlight to really showcase these demographics shifts. So our district has 44 different languages spoken at home. And in terms of race and ethnicity, when I looked back to 2003, 2004, 15 years ago, 88% of our students identified as Caucasian, and today, 73% of our students identify as Caucasian. Our second-largest racial subgroup is our Asian students with 13.7%. And 15 years ago, those numbers were 3.3%. And even more staggering, when I polled the specific number of students in just the last two years, we have added 490 Asian-identifying students to our Olentangie community. This is close to the size of one of our elementary buildings. I just also wanted to highlight one additional demographic. We have 165 students in our district whose parents are either active duty or in the National Guard. And so that's also another demographic that we are continuing to work to support in the district. And I wanted to take a moment to also celebrate a couple of the highlights from last year that were really meaningful. So in August, we were able to host our very first district-wide multilingual family night. This was held in collaboration with Pupil Services Department, specifically Stephanie Dabroco over the ELL program, and it was held at Orange Middle School. We were able to provide interpreters for every single language spoken for parents who needed one, and we registered over 63 families. While that might seem like a kind of small number, at that point, we had about 200 families who could come to that event, so that, we were very proud of that. And because of the success, we're actually having a second event at Orange Middle School on September 18th, so that's coming up here in a couple of weeks. And then in October, we started the Classified Leadership and Culture Committee. And this is really an effort to create that vision of one Olentangie, creating spaces for classified, certified, and administrative staff to get together and engage in continuous learning opportunities. And then November came around, and we attended the National Association of Multicultural Education Conference. We were able to take three staff members with us to this conference, and it was incredible to see how these staff members significantly shifted their practice as a result of attending this conference. So I reached out to one of those staff members. It's Brian Barkhurst at Orange Middle School. He was actually their Teacher of the Year this year. And I asked for his feedback about the experience, and he said the following. "Based on what I learned at the conference, I have rethought my lessons so that they are more student-focused, they incorporate more student-centered discussions on cultural topics, and utilize social justice themes in class. At the building level, I'm using the ideas and strategies I gain to ensure all students are more equally represented in the school. Overall, the conference gave me tools to promote student learning and help students better succeed." And so as a result of that, we're, I'm actually working in collaboration with him to offer an OPDA class in January specifically for world language teachers, as he's a teacher of world language at Orange Middle, that's around incorporating social justice and culture into the world language classroom. In February, we were able to host our largest one-community conference to date. So when we started this four years ago, we had about 95 participants. Last year, we saw over 300% increase with 350 attendees, and over 15 other districts and universities came to Olentangie to be a part of that conference. And in April, we were very proud to welcome our very first graduating class of global scholars who are going to be receiving their diplomas next year. We had 40 students who are seniors this year who qualified for that, and they will be receiving their diplomas, and they focused their take-action projects on everything from the global wage gap to the refugee experience to include... the refugee experience to including cultural competency in the elementary. These are really examples of students engaging in difficult research and conversations that impact our local, national, and global community. And that program, Global Scholars, is done in collaboration with the Columbus Council on World Affairs. And then just before moving on from that, I wanted to share one additional piece of community feedback from the One Community Conference that really speaks to the power of the student involvement in that conference. They wrote, "Hearing the stories of the student keynote speakers was such an amazing experience. They spoke with such confidence and grace about their toughest and most vulnerable moments. I had tears in my eyes. Such amazing individuals." And I echo that statement tenfold. So at this time, I wanted to direct your attention to the handout that you received, which is the Diversity Committee Action Plan. This action plan has 14 different points on it in three different categories: our commitment to students, our commitment to staff, and our commitment to community. As you remember, last year, the Diversity Committee held a forum on supporting our racially diverse students. And from that meeting, Superintendent Rafe was supportive and adopted this plan. I will be highlighting six points from this plan and discussing the actions that we have taken or will be taking, will be taking in order to address these specific areas. So the first, and I'm going to go through students first, then staff, and then community. So one of the commitments that we made to our students is to provide a commitment to access. And so one step we're going to take is by reviewing data on student access and outcomes in our higher-level courses to identify and eliminate any inequities that may exist. So we have actually worked to develop an equity plan that focuses on access to advanced placement courses in our high school, and that's where we're going to begin. The structure for our plan is informed by the Equal Opportunities Framework of increasing equitable enrollment in our highest-level courses across subgroups. So advanced placement, as I said, is our first area of focus that we are going to be taking on. And then from there, we'll be reviewing additional areas of analysis. Our second commitment to our students is to provide opportunities to center student voice. And one way we're going to do that is by developing a student-specific track at our annual One Community Conference. So part of this effort really involves developing a global symposium for our students in collaboration with global scholars and the Columbus Council on World Affairs. This is going to be an opportunity to give our students a voice and opportunity to engage with their peers in conversations around global issues, diversity issues, and action-oriented conversations. So that's where we're looking to move with the One Community Conference. Next, we move to our commitments to our staff. And one of our biggest commitments that we're just continuing to further is around professional learning opportunities. So we are empowering staff by equipping them with strategies to address global and diverse topics through ongoing professional development on culturally relevant practices. And the inclusion of the word "staff" here is very important because it's not just stopping at our teaching staff. You know, we had the opportunity to collaborate with Bethany Lenko with Food Service, and Heather Cole, our district diversity coordinator, went and actually conducted an in-service training for the food, over 150 food service staff. And we were able to do that in August. In addition, I'm very lucky to be part of a team where collaboration is highly valued, as it is throughout the district, but particularly on the curriculum team, collaboration is highly valued. And so this year, I will support the building team visits as they go to every single school four times with strategies for how to better incorporate culture and context into teaching practice. We also are starting the process of training for coaches and athletic directors. So we're going to start the conversations and opportunities for that this year and continue to roll that out in coming years. And then OPDA offerings. This is something that we prioritize every year, but this year, we're doing an even larger push. We are doing everything from supporting our LGBTQ youth to critically analyzing media and developing media literacy to understand bias and how people are represented in the media. We're doing a course around building diverse text sets, which will be for our English Language Arts and Media Specialists. And then also a course that's specifically tailored where teachers can develop lessons for their individual classroom contexts. Additionally, for our commitment to staff, we are committed to representation. So this means continuing to develop strategies to recruit and retain teaching candidates. So on August 9th, at the board meeting, Todd Meyer gave a staffing update where he shared that this year, in terms of diverse hiring, we saw 13% of our certified staff, 11% of our classified staff, and 25% of our administrative staff were diverse hires. We are going to continue to build on this initiative and the support that we see from our leadership for this important endeavor. And finally, moving on to our commitments to our community, we have a commitment to outreach. So hosting regular events, speakers, workshops, classes, that our communities can be involved with that focus on diversity and equity topics. We are committed to hosting these once per month to expand our outreach. And our first event is this month, on September 20th. And the topic is navigating conversations about race and racism with your children. That will be facilitated by Dr. Hassan Kwame Jeffries from Ohio State University, who is a history and civil rights professor. Ma'keelah Thomas, who's also joining us as our district K-12 diversity chair, she will be hosting two of our events specifically around building empathy and building a positive sense of self-identity. So look forward to those in the future. And in addition, we're also collaborating with Alicia Behrens and Katie Hostic in Pupil Services to provide non-academic barriers workshops on stress and anxiety and developing well-rounded students. And lastly, in our commitment to community, we are committed to transparency. And one of the ways we are doing this is through developing metrics to measure our progress in diversity and equity initiatives. Transparency with the community is extremely important. And so we will be using our committee, our diversity committee, to monitor and guide our progress on the points of this plan. We will be inviting community members in to support us in this work and help us with getting these initiatives tackled. And we're going to continue to encourage people to participate in, in our offerings and to give us their voice and feedback. So lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to really thank you, to thank Superintendent Rafe, to thank the board for your commitment to equity. Because when I look at, back in 2012, when we first started and were formally established, we started with a half-time teacher on special assignment. And because of your support and the value that you have placed on our program, we have grown it to add myself as a full-time administrator, a district-level K-12 diversity chair, and 24 supplementals so that each of our buildings can have a diversity liaison. That really speaks volumes to our community, and they recognize and appreciate the support that you have given and your commitment to equity. Thank you.
Questions?
Yep. You're good.
Okay. I'm very glad that you're having Dr. Jeffries in. I've heard him twice because he's been brought in, and I'm going to be promoting the heck out of it because even though some of the things he says may be uncomfortable for some people to hear, it needs to be said. He's an excellent speaker.
Thank you.
So I'm very glad to see that. But one thing that came to my mind this week, and I, I put it out there, is a community read even, like a community book, like we're all going to read one book. I'm almost done with The Hate U Give, and I'm reading it right, right now. And, but I thought, you know, there are other books that we could all be reading and then have discussions about them as well, you know, like The Curious Incident of the Dog and The Night Time, you know, about a student who has autism or probably Asperger's, but, you know, or, you know, a book about LGBTQ students or something like that, and do community reads. Because I really want to talk to somebody about The Hate U Give. And I put it out there, I think it might have been on the summer reading list at Liberty High, but, you know, I just think that there's some good community conversations that could be had if we did a community read. So I'd like to throw that out there because there are a bunch of books on a, a bunch of different topics that could be discussed. But I applaud, you know, all of the actions because I tell the story of the time when my husband was in school here, there was, he was a class of 85, and there was one African-American student, and she was really from Africa. And so that's where this district has come, you know. And so, you know, I want people to realize that we are making strides. It may not be as fast as some people would hope, but please know that we support people of all, people and students of all backgrounds here, and that only leads to the strength of the district.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
I have a comment, I guess, and a question.
Yes.
So the recent visit of our president, I was amazed and disgusted at all the same time at the vitriol that that created and the, just the awful things that were said and discussed overall. And I think that shows a gap still in the community, the tolerance gap, for sure. So tell me, it's a big job to do it in a district with 21,000 kids and their families. Who else in the community are you aligning with to help deliver that message? Because it does take more than just you and the people in the room and everyone else that wants to be involved and has a passion for just not allowing that hatred to, and all those things to go, you know, to, I don't want to say pass over or pass through, but, but at some point, there has to be more than just you. So can you tell me, is there anyone else you're aligning with in the community that will help you with this?
Yeah. So I mean, beyond, beyond me and beyond the capacity that we're continuing to build up at our building levels through, you know, the diversity liaisons and then always continuing to educate and empower our principals as instructional leaders and leaders in this effort. We are intentionally seeking out community partnerships. So one that we have continued to come back to actually to are two Indian women in the district, Geetha Nori and Vasudagarg, who we have collaborated with and have actually come into a lot of our elementary, middle, and high schools to talk about Indian culture. And so looking at, well, this is what the schooling system looks like in India, and here's, you know, some of what our students might be struggling to understand about the expectations of American culture or Olentangy community. And so the staff members have expressed a lot of appreciation for the additional understanding that that has brought for the way that they can help to support the students in their care through that. So that's just one avenue. We've also talked about looking at building relationships with local, like we have multiple temples in the area. And as we see that our Indian population is continuing to increase significantly every year, looking at how we can leverage and utilize some of the religious and spiritual leaders in our community as well, just to talk through what are some needs that students might have that we might not know to how to better support them. We're continuing to expand just with community organizations and university professors, even for, you know, One Community, for example, partnerships with Ottervine, partnerships with Ohio Wesleyan, partnerships with Ohio State Kaleidoscope Youth Center, which supports LGBTQ youth. So we are constantly out there searching for people who can help to support delivering or getting the message out. And so we can always use more help and support with that because we only, you know, know, I'm sure, a fraction of what's out there for getting support in this area. But it's definitely on our radar, and we're continuing to build up those partnerships.
I would agree. I see Jay Davis is with us, and I saw her flyer for the event on the 4th. And it was on the Powell Bubble, which is one of my least favorite places of conversation because I wish they would do something nice like a, a book review or something worthwhile, but we have a long way to go. A lot of the comments that I saw on that about this should include, I mean, it was pretty clear, everyone's invited. It was, it was really clear. So I don't know what the, what the controversy was about. I feel like we're, we're still going to have some.
There's always controversy.
We've got a ways to, we've got a ways to go. And again, I blame social media. But, yeah. But I, you know, I, I'm noticing a lot of things, even in my own child's education, they're studying schools around the world right now in history. He's in world history. I was like, oh, that's good because they don't all look the same. And he was searching all over the internet for pictures, and they're comparing. He read, his English reading was about an American Indian boy with disabilities. And it, it was really good. It was, it was an excellent book. So I'm grateful for that. One point to clarify, this year's One Community, so is, like, there's a theme that's changing and you want to focus, your speakers will be global scholars? Is that what you're?
Yeah. I'm sorry, that's a great point of clarification. So every year, we do have a new theme. So we started with Building Bridges of Understanding, and then we had Empowering Student Voice. And this year, we're focusing on, we haven't quite come up with what the actual theme is, but something about us as allies, advocates and allies for each other. So we're playing around with that. Don't quote me on that, it's not official yet, but something to that effect.
I like it, yeah.
Really to, to give this imagery of all of us are a part of the conversation, we all need to be at the table and supporting this work. But last year, we did have a couple of workshop opportunities that were available for students from, you know, kindergarten all the way up. There were opportunities for them to kind of learn and engage, but we're looking to continue to bolster those offerings and figure out how to bring more students into the conversation. And as a part of that, I thought a great opportunity would be to link with the Global Scholars Group to really have them help to lead some dialogue around global initiatives and global changes that they want to see, and linking them, again, with organizations, businesses, and people in the community that spearhead some of those efforts. So you're really dialoguing with people who are in the field around those issues. So that's my idea for the conference.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just one. So you showed the slide of how we've come from a half-time teacher to where you are.
Yes.
So I know, I believe you, you said very clearly that, you know, things cost. From my chair, speak only for myself, I don't want us to be in a position at all to think that addressing issues of importance for the community are always driven by the dollar sign. I mean, we've been through that before in our past where there was a fear, fear of the dollar sign. We can't spend money because there may be a handful of taxpayers in the world who get really torqued off about that. We can't, we can't do that. This, this is as important as anything else we're going to do, the anxiety thing as well because it cuts across our population. We have to, we have to be informed. So please, don't, don't feel that you can't come to the board and with requests or ideas and things that come through, you know. We, we want to hear them, and we'll, we'll look. They're not, it's not always going to be a yes, but I don't want, I don't want there to be this fear of the dollar. We can't look at things that are important. And again, that's just from my seat. I'm not looking left or right in my peripheral vision to see if there's any other facial expressions or eye rolling. Just my seat.
Well, just to be clear, those recommendations do, I mean, they, they advocate with our leadership team and me, and, you know, we make those final decisions on what to, what kind of staffing to build into the five-year forecast and bring forward. And, and, you know, we plan that as we come into the, into October forecast season and then into the May forecast season is depending on what, what the numbers are looking like and how we can push them forward to get that, you know, a number eventually. Because we always know that the levy on Olentangy is not an if, it's a when, and what that number will be that we can have that will pass. And I do think that we have a responsibility to advocate with our community for these type of key initiatives that significantly impact or improve our, our, our learning environment. And that's what we've done in the last four years as bringing these forward. Jackie's position sat, sat on the table in the five-year forecast for better part of five years before we finally brought it forward, so.
Was that before you?
No.
Okay. But I just wanted to.
I'm not saying that because of that, but it was different financial times also, so.
I just think, I think we've just, we've just, yeah, I know that some of those things are driven by the economics of, of dollars and cents in the economy and where the economy sits. I get all that.
And that's where, when we do those things, the initiatives have to show value, you know, because we, we had, you know, we, we cut positions in tough economic times, assistant principals at the elementary grade, elementary buildings that we've now brought back, second, a second lit support in the, you know, and our achievement hasn't gone down. But the focus of the statewide is changing, I think, moving away from some of the myopic focus on test scores to include more facets of social, emotional learning, a whole child. And I'm proud that we're ahead of the curve on these things. As we've been, you know, as you guys know from the history of the state test, the state report card, things that ended up on the state report card were being reported to the Board of Education long before they ended up on the state report card. So some of these measures with regards to social, emotional learning and non-academic barriers to learning and those kind of things, I think, will become measures or reportable somewhere in the future. And I, I do think we're ahead of the curve on this because Mr. Fetti has identified really good people to run these programs.
Well, I'm excited to see the empathy component and, and what that looks like. I think that, you know, as, as a school district, part of our responsibility is our quality profile and to turn kids out of our schools that will, that won't always be in a community that looks just like this. Because let's face it, this is not a true representation of the entire world. I think that's a big part of our responsibility. So I'm, I'm excited and anxious to see all that unfolds this year, watch this program continue to grow. continue to grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dave?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to the Board President's Report. I will be brief, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I would like to thank the countless many that contributed to yet another great start to the school year. There's a thousand moving pieces in getting a year off to its start and I just, it takes so much effort on so many. Thank you. This past August is when we last met on the 9th and since then, we've started school. I have to say, I've been highly distracted with sending my own off to college. I've, you know, I hear, I read about people and what an emotional process it is and I was like, I'll be fine. Well, I wasn't really prepared. It was, it was tough. But, that being said, I had, I thought about my child's support through the process and she received an excellent education. She had, she and myself had a lot of support from our district and, you know, steps along the way, what do you do next, here's what this means. And I, I am very grateful in that because it was a, it was a difficult transition for myself. And I think I have a daughter that is very well-prepared for college. So thank you to the district. Next, on the 19th, we will have our Fall OSBA Conference and Mr. Jervich, our Mr. Jervich is the keynote speaker. And if you haven't seen him speak before, he's fabulous and I'm, I'm excited to see what he does this time. Our next board meeting is September 27th here and October 5th is our next policy meeting. So Mr. Fetti, I will have more questions for you the next time you come up to present those because it looks like there's some interesting changes coming. This week, we also had our Facilities Committee and I'm going to refer to Mr. Barts to give us a quick update.
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, on the enrollment projections, the committee and the subcommittee are working on our next set of enrollment projections, which will be presented in November, I believe. Nothing to report other than what we already know, which is we continue to grow and we're going to need to have another building at some point. So once that, that goes through the process, as we all know, the biggest strain is pre-K. That's the biggest push and stress on our buildings. So speaking of that, an update on the three additions. Delco, the sewer district, the townships have all been met with, with regards to tapping where the buildings are going to be, zoning and things like that. That's all progressing. It's not all finalized, but it's all in good shape. We will be out to bid, well, the bonds have been sold. We'll be out to bid in October for the three additions. It'll be awarded shortly after that and we'll start construction in November. And that's still in the window to all be completed by the time the next school year begins in August. I think tonight we have the approval of our ongoing super construction supervisor to lead us through that process. But everything looks good, it looks like it's on track. So there'll be another update once the bids come out. There is another meeting on the 19th for enrollment that, so that committee's going to be meeting every couple of weeks until they finalize that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions I can answer for.
I have, I have a question. The topic on the Facebook message boards lately have been apartments that are coming into the community, specifically on the west side of the school district, but I know we're going to have some over here on the east side as well, maybe the Menards area. But, but we were provided some information on yield factors of the apartments, but I just want to verify that when you're doing the enrollment projections, that the zoning, say for multifamily, includes that, yes, there could be apartments on that land at some point. So that we know in our projections, we're projecting correctly. I mean, our projections were spot on, I think we're like 73 kids off or something like that. It was unbelievable. You know, that's a bull's eye, but.
Yeah, the apartments are considered in that and that yield, we all know that yield is very low of children per apartment. It's, it's enough that it'll tickle the number, but it won't push the number too high. You know, it's like the ones that were put on South Old State and the ones over in Polaris. What prevents those from really pushing the numbers over is their cost.
I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is either. Are you doing that?
No, nobody is touching their mics.
So with that, yeah, so that's, that'll be part of it. And, you know, with Mr. Fetti's advice, still looking at what we did last year, which is available classroom based, is a more accurate model. We're still going to obviously look at the housing model, but I think we're off the live birth model. We've decided that that is a, not an indicator of enrollment and is a little archaic. So that has been put, put in the, put in the file and.
So we are done, we are done with single model and have competing models?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to that single model. And so, I mean, and that proved itself to be, I mean, with our number and the closeness of that projection proved to be, to be spot on. So, so yeah, and then we're using both of our consultants differently. We're not, they're not all, both all-in on it. So Tracy and Scott. So Scott's going to be more in the lead with that, Tracy's going to look at only small bits and then probably.
Some point maybe get out a one consultant.
I think that's, I think that's the goal. I mean, that was, I think our recommendation wasn't, Dave, was maybe to wean off of one of those consult, just a verification. I think that Tracy's being used mostly as a verification, but I think that's the more than, most likely scenario is that that will.
I just recommend we move progress. I mean, we don't need to spend money to have one consultant check the work of another.
That is, that is true and I think, I think we're at that point.
Much more of a supplementary law than I think it would disperse. Angie and Sharon met even before the subcommittee meeting. And went through the entire method of calculation and they even compared it to other methods. And they're, it's, they're much on board, let's go with what we're talking about.
Good.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Barts, for that update. I appreciate it. Now moving on to Mr. Rafe, would you please present your superintendent report?
Thank you, thank you and welcome. Welcome, everyone. Just to clarify, I know we're going to develop a communications plan for, with the additions and all the things that are going to occur, occur around the additions and we've gotten some early questions about that, how we're going to manage that. So that'll be something we'll be communicating to those school communities of when construction will be and no, construction workers won't have access to buildings and background checks and things. You know, we, we have done an addition project before in the district. We, when we built Orange High School, that was the time we added on to Olentanghi High School with the auditorium and all that space. So this is a process, like many processes, we've managed before, so.
Well, that's, that's Mr. Gordon and Mr. O'Sullivan's job. They'll, they've, I mean, Jeff's spoken extensively at the facility committee meetings about that separation and making sure that the kids and parents are.
But as we know, it's just, it's always good to over-communicate.
Yep.
We've got a lot of new people in the community that haven't been through these things, things before, so we'll, we'll be all over that. As Mrs. Patrick mentioned, it's been a while since we've been together, so we actually did have convocation and our vendor fair and open school. The highlight of our convocation was hearing from Mr. Jervich, our Ohio Teacher of the Year and one of the finalists for the National Teacher of the Year. And, you know, we put in one of his best quotes though, is that "The heart of our successes are the meaningful connections that, that we create with our students." I got more positive feedback on this convocation than any other we've ever had. So, Mrs. Davis, it was a great idea to capitalize on Jonathan and I appreciate you having that idea. And now the challenge is how are we going to top it for next year? So, as always, it's always hard to top last year, so. As, as Tim did indicate, we do have our test results back. We anticipate the state report card coming out in mid-September here, which is coming up. We already do know that 500 of our students earn perfect scores on one or more of sections of some spring tests, whether it was elementary, middle school, or high school. I'm quite certain that's the highest number that we've ever had. So congratulations to those students and their families. You know, as I mentioned before, we are doing a lot of work focusing on character development in the whole child. So our schools across the district are hosting day-long events focused on teaching students about leadership, respect, kindness, empathy. This picture is Jim Basketball Jones. He's visited quite a few schools throughout our district. He has 20 years of experience as a professional school assembly speaker. Again, this, this picture was at Orange High School, but Orange Middle School came down for this presentation. Want to highlight our local Rotary. They, every year they offer to paint the 50 states on playgrounds throughout the district. Many of them, they come back and just refresh, so the 50 nifty United States are painting. Is it really a song?
It is a song.
Oh, my gosh. These elementary people, I don't know the, you sang me the first verse? Oh, she's, allegedly she sang me the first verse today, so. We posted the picture on Facebook and it was very, the feedback's been very positive and, you know, people are reaching out, they want their playgrounds spruced up, so it's really, it's neat. I, I love seeing it on the playground, so. One of the highlights of the opening of school is our curriculum nights throughout the district. We obviously do the high school curriculum nights and, and obviously this year was a challenge with split families at, at some of our schools and trying to coordinate that. We did try to stagger those curriculum nights time-wise, but realized it was difficult for some families to manage that. But there's just, there's just always conflicts. We did try to look at different nights, but all we found is every, all we found was more conflicts. So, you know, we decided to go ahead with that. So we have high school on one night, middle school on another night, and then we do K-1, 2, and 3, 5 on, on separate nights. I'm just amazed as I travel throughout the district at the number of people who attend those. And it just, it is, you know, cornerstone to our success as a district that that parent support, involvement in the education process, their willingness and desire to, to engage in their child's education is just, is just very, very impactful on our success. So I just thank and appreciate all the parents that were able to be there. Every, everything at Berlin High School is a first, so obviously we, they did host their first Friday night football game and it was, I was there for the first part of the game. The entire home section was filled. I, they have 899 students on the enrollment report today. I think there were 700 there. There was, it was, and everything, of course, is in unison. Mr. Spinner has them highly orchestrated. They were very fortunate, they did get, they won their very first game, so I, I think the ritual was some, they decided not to put a victory bell in at Berlin, they put a bear statue in the, on the south end zone, so they sang the alma mater to the bear statue. So claws up. I know Spinner's here somewhere, he's probably.
No, he's not here.
He's too busy.
One discussion item.
Yeah, he's too busy.
He's still sweaty from the air conditioning being out. One discussion item, Mr. Fetti will give as usual, his presentation on second reading of our board policy updates, which is, I, we know it's out of sync, but we did have a couple we had to, to get here through. Two action items I want to highlight, we have on the agenda, approval of administrative employment for Joe Swazi. He unfortunately was not able to be here. This is a newly created position that we put into the forecast here for this year as our Director of Safety, Security, and Preparedness. Joe is currently working for the FBI. I shared with you his resume, I hope you found it impressive. He will be retiring effective October 1st, will be starting with us as soon as he retires at the end of September. When I first, when we first talked about putting this position into our administrative ranks, the first person I thought of was Sheriff Martin. I think the most highly respected law enforcement officer in, in, in the county and one of the, in the state. And I said, Russ, we're going to create this position, do you want it? And he said, I'm not ready to stop being sheriff, but if I were going to hire somebody for this position, I'd hire Joe. So we, Joe got in the process, we interviewed Todd, 15, eight, eight people for the, we had a very, very, very strong pool of candidates, but Joe came right to the top and affirmed Russ's, Russ's faith, Sheriff Martin's faith in him. So I'm just, I'm really proud, I think, again, this is something we're ahead of the curve on. We're obviously a large district. Joe's going to take a look at all of our safety protocols. He's already been involved in the planning with the elementary additions and how we can enhance the, the entrances to make them more secure. He's going to work with our SROs and do a thorough analysis of everything we're doing and give us opportunities for improvement in that area. I always, a lot of times when people say, safety is our first priority, I don't, I don't say that. I say facilitating maximum learning is our first priority. But that can't happen unless our students are being taught in a safe, secure, and caring environment. So the safety of our students is certainly one of our highest priorities. Second action item I want to highlight is approving the contract amendment for the owner's rep services with, this is with Bruce, Bruce O'Sullivan, who's going to continue to monitor construction progress for our elementary additions. It's, it's just an amendment to the contract that we had in place as he worked on, on the Berlin High School project, so. With that, couple important dates coming up. Orange High School Homecoming Dance, anybody looking for a fun night? You're more than willing to come help Mr. Smith chaperone and experience a high school homecoming dance? And then you have an opportunity on the 29th, as OHS Liberty and Berlin will be hosting their homecoming dances. And then we have seven, September 17th is our Professional Development Day where we are not in session, the teachers are in session for professional development. Vince DiTillio has moved into a role of primarily being, of his main responsibility is professional development and had a chance to preview that with our administrative team and our principals. He's brought all the principals in and members of their building leadership teams to do, do pre-planning to deliver that professional development and it's just, it's excellent. So really proud of that work. As Jackie had highlighted in her presentation, we have the Equity and Inclusion Parent Workshop that I encourage attendance at. And then September 27th is our next Board of Education meeting, so.
Where is that workshop?
That?
Here.
Here.
Berlin Room. Is there a reason why Orange is going kind of out of cycle on homecoming?
You know, it, it's hard. The principals, they're, they try to work to get them on the same night. It, we, we're in a discussion on this. It's a challenge, we're so big, especially at Orange and Liberty, to, having them on the same night will kind of cut down attendance a little bit, but it's, it's hard because you have to work around the football schedule of when they're home and try to pick an opponent where you have a better chance to win a homecoming game than not. So there's a little bit of factors that go in. It just worked out that the other three were able to do it. Prom-wise.
Three, I have three, you have four on the same night.
Yeah, but I think they've already moved forward the following year and are going to have them on the same night.
It's hard, though, to get facilities. Oh, my gosh, it's, it's really hard.
And we still do the homecoming dances and they're open to all the grades.
The homecomings are here, but the prom, it's hard to get the, yeah, the outside facilities, because we don't sell alcohol. So, you know, the, the facilities want people who are drinking, that's how they make their money, or buying food. It's very difficult. And the school board has nothing to do with dance dates, I want to go on record. So don't complain to us.
No, you don't.
When they're all on the same date.
Or the behavior of students at the dance, that is a responsibility of the building administration.
Yeah.
It is one of the reasons I'm not, I'm glad I'm not a building administrator anymore.
Could you quickly go back to your first slide with Jonathan? You don't have to turn the lights off, that's okay. I just thought it might be nice to share an interesting point that he made about the drawing.
Yes.
Yeah, so the drawing in his presentation, they were done by one of his students and she's a child with autism and that was really moving when he, when he told that story and, and her growth and development, what the teachers at Liberty Tree Elementary did for her over the course of her, her career there. But yeah, she did, she did.
Her art was on every slide.
Yes, she was tested, gifted in art.
And, and I might also add to Dave's comment that Mr. Jervich surveyed our teachers and highlighted their successes.
Yeah.
Which, which was really neat, so.
Yeah, I think that's really what, you know, and he had asked all the administrators to share a touching story with, you know, some, some story that talked about the meaningful connections staff members make and they highlighted. connections staff members make. And they highlighted a bus driver and a custodian, and so is a food service worker. Yeah. Yes, Mrs. Langko. She's still mad at me that I forgot, I blanked on her last name at a meeting four months ago.
Deep-seated guilt.
Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Mrs. Hatfield, are you ready for the treasurer's report?
I am. Thank you. Well, good evening. One of the updates that I had for you this evening was in regards to the sale of the bonds. So, I won't go into too much detail, as Mr. Barts already touched on it. But just to reiterate, we did sell $9.5 million in bonds for the elementary addition project. Those bonds, we were able to do, to issue them as a 20-year maturity, which is a good thing for the district. We're always taking a look at the cost and issuance of debt and making sure that we're being responsible with that issuance and not extending the cost, extending the life of that by issuing the 30 years in which we would pay more interest. So, we were happy that we were able to work that into our debt capacity and no new millage models that we currently have in place for our community. Also, that's previously discussed at our last board meeting. We talked about House Bill 87, which was signed into law. It had a unique amendment attached to it that would change the date of the five-year forecast reporting and when that is due to be filed with the Ohio Department of Education. That date will change to November 30th, but not until 2019. So, for this fiscal year, we are moving forward with the October update as previously done, and we will have that filed with the Ohio Department of Education by October 31st. So, the first reading of that forecast will come to the board the first meeting in October, second reading with approval at the second meeting in October, so that we can meet those filing deadlines. So, I just wanted to give you an update on the impact of that bill. And then finally, we have several items on the agenda for board action tonight. We have the approval of the July financials, amended appropriations, donations, minutes for the July 9th meeting, and the renewal of our Mount Carmel contract for wellness services. On the June financials, we just wanted to highlight that we had a couple of exceptions that caused variances in our real estate revenue, one of which just being the timing of the second half of collections for the real estate settlements. Those fell in July. Typically, we'll see advances issued through July and final collections in August, but it was all received in July. So, it's causing a variance to post compared to our expectations. But we are on target overall with all of our revenue, as predicted in the May forecast at this point. You'll see, when the August financials come through, you'll see that flip or the exception go the other way to show that there's a net zero impact to the overall collections. Our expenditures are coming in slightly above our May forecast in our personnel and our benefits items. Those are related to the negotiated agreements. Of course, we knew that that would have that impact as we did the pre-forecast in May and then closed our negotiations in June. We talked about that a little bit in the July update that we had at our August 9th board meeting. So, we're still moving in line with where we thought we would be with that July update. And we'll update those expectations in the October forecast and go through those in detail again at that time. The amended appropriations that we have on the agenda tonight for approval are just updating our existing budgets to revenues received. We have major components in the federal, in federal funds coming in or awarded to the district. And so, we're updating our budgets to be in compliance with accounting standards and ORC practices. We have a couple of donations that we would like to formally recognize tonight as well. Our athletic booster groups at Liberty and Orange High School have made donations. LAB donated over $4,600 for an assistant football coach, while OOAB, or Orange Athletic Boosters, donated over $1,900 for a girls' assistant volleyball coach. So, we want to say thank you to our booster groups and all of our community support that we receive throughout the district. They're always very kind to us, not only in monetary donations, but in their support with their time and efforts as well. So, we're very grateful for that. We have the approval of the July 9th meetings as submitted. And then we are recommending the renewal for our Mount Carmel contract to provide wellness services to our staff. We invited Mount Carmel to come and present at our last board meeting to give an update of the programming and the successes that they've had with, through this program with our staff. So, we would like to continue that momentum and have them renew their contract. The contract does not have an increase in cost and continues to be supported with funding through our insurance carrier programs. So, it's not an additional cost to the forecast with this contract. So, we wanted to point that out as well. Are there any questions or discussion of those items?
What was the rate on the bonds?
I'm sorry?
What was the interest rate on the bonds?
The net interest cost was 3.5%.
That's good.
Yeah. So, we were very pleased with how that priced with our group. We had a great interest rate, and again, we're able to shorten the maturity on that as well.
Good. Good job.
Anybody else? Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Do we have any public participation this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Now, we'll welcome Mr. Fettie for the second reading of our policies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, there are three policies for your approval tonight that we submitted for a quick turnaround based on some legal changes. Did you have any questions on those policies?
I'll be prepared next time.
I will.
Okay.
14 seconds.
Was that 14? Okay, I will now entertain a motion for board action items A and B.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Mrs. Hatfield, call the roll.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Hatfield, will you please present your treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through E for approval, please.
I'll move.
I'll second. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Rafe, will you please present your treasurer action items?
Superintendent.
I mean superintendent. I'm sorry.
He would do it.
We don't want him to be the treasurer or present those items.
Yes, I'll submit superintendent action items A through F for approval.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to enter into executive session as permitted by Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider complaints against public employee and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statutes. This motion considers a complaint made under Board Policy 9130 without a written request. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
The second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Dave. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. Thank you for joining us. We will return only to vote on any new business resulting from our executive session and to adjourn. Thank you.